It's acting in that capacity, it would probably be best to defer to either of you.
I'm not sure any of us have a lot of experience, but I will, I will step up and play that role for tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
And staff is certainly here to help you in any way we can.
Thank you. Principal Planner Getz, do we need to take any vote on that? Is that just a de facto volunteer?
I think, yeah, just the meeting hasn't been called to order, but technically, it says in the bylaws that you need to vote on it, so.
Okay, well, let's call the meeting to order. Welcome to the public and to staff and to, and to the other commissioners, because Commissioner Ariaga and Mayor, Commissioner Mayors are absent tonight. One of us needs to step up, be the temporary acting chair, and I'm willing to do that. And, do I need, do we need a motion for that?
That would be great, yes, thanks.
Okay, so I've put forth a motion that Commissioner Benson will temporarily act as the acting chair for this.
I'll second your motion.
The discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions. Okay. I think we, I think we're moving forward. So again, welcome to the public and to staff. So I guess we'll start with a roll call and we'll call that out by name. Principal Planner Getz, will you call roll for us?
Actually, Jessica will do that for us.
Jessica, sorry.
I was gonna say, I have one job. Okay.
You'll have to unmute yourself, though, if you want to call roll.
I think I'm unmuted. Am I still, am I not muted? Can y'all hear me?
Not hearing you yet.
You're still showing as muted.
If I unmute, that's the problem. Hmm.
So let me call the roll for you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Benson?
Present.
Commissioner Freitas?
Present.
Commissioner Lazar?
Here.
And Commissioner Ariaga and Meyer are absent tonight.
Well, we're, I'm going to stand to salute the flag. Those who would like to join me standing, please do. Put your hand over your hearts. Is there a flag anywhere to look at, or we just assume there's one?
I put one up on the screen, I think.
Okay.
Okay. Um, the meeting is not muted. So.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation, God, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I don't think we should quit our day jobs and try to be a really tight ensemble. Okay, so, so moving forward, um, do we have a motion to approve the minutes of September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
And I will second that motion. Do any commissioners have any revisions or comments on the minutes? Go ahead, Commissioner Lazar.
Thank you. I noticed, and I asked Commissioner Freitas to back me up on this, or let me know if I'm forgetting something. In the, the Beadis Zoo Trail sequoia minutes, what I didn't notice was our directive that the, we had a series of recommendations that we wanted to be passed along to the council, I believe. And I, and I wanted to know if that was your recollection as well, for when this came back before then, when funding came around. Does that sound familiar?
Yes, yeah, thanks for flagging that. I think the commission's motion was to submit those to the council within forty-eight hours of our decision, and then, again, in the council packet when they were to award funds for actual construction.
And I apologize when I reviewed the minutes in draft, I had already done that, so in my mind, it's done. So I apologize, and I can certainly make that correction for you.
But we can vote on approving these minutes with those revisions made by, by Principal Planner Getz. Any other comments on the meeting minutes from last meeting, September thirteenth? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to put this to a vote. All in favor of approving the minutes, September thirteenth, say aye.
Do we need to, do we need to redo it as, as modified? Or can we just approve as?
Yeah, I thought I gave some language that we were approving it with the verbal modifications that we just made, although if you prefer to see that in writing, I'm sure we could.
No, well, I will second that, and I'm happy to vote on it.
Okay, all right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that seems to be unanimous. Okay, thank you, commissioners. Okay, so next on the agenda is oral communications. And so this is where commissioners and/or the public has the opportunity to address the commission on, on any subject not appearing on the agenda. Let's start with the general public. Is there anyone here from the general public tonight who wishes to address the, the commission on any item not appearing on tonight's agenda?
I see nobody raising a hand, Mr. Temporary Chair, and we did not have anybody request to speak during public comment, or, excuse me, oral communication decision.
Thank you, Principal Planner Getz. And how about commissioners? Any, any comments tonight in oral communications? Okay, seeing none, let's move on to item E, public hearings, and it appears that there's still no, there's continued public hearings, but no particular items tonight. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes. Under continue.
Okay, so we have two big items tonight, E two A and E two B, including some new business, so I guess we will launch right into England Marine Design Review and coastal development permit. And will we be hearing a report from staff tonight on that?
You will.
Okay, I'd like to turn it over to staff to provide that report. Thank you.
The senior planner, Lisa Savage, is going to provide the report for you this evening.
Minute while I set up my screen. Everybody see that correct presentation?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Good evening, commissioners, I'm Lisa Savage. The next agenda item is an application from England Marine and Industrial Supply to construct a marine supply store with associated parking and landscaping. The project is proposed at the western corner of Waterfront Drive and Marina Way on an undeveloped parcel owned by the city of Eureka. The Warfenger Building and Eureka Public Marina are located across Marina Way to the northeast, and the balloon tract is located across Waterfront Drive to the south. Give me a second, lights off my window, it's kind of noisy, sorry. Sorry about that. The parcel is flat and covered in compacted sand and gravel filled with non-native grasses. There is an existing sidewalk along Waterfront Drive and a sidewalk and landscaping strip along Marina Way that will be retained. There is currently a limited view of Humboldt Bay from the waterfront, from Waterfront Drive across the parcel. City Council authorized the lease of the inland portion of the parcel to England Marine in July of twenty nineteen. The development footprint will cover one point five acres of the two point eight five acre parcel. England Marine wants to develop the store at the site because they have outgrown their current store location in a portion of a city-owned building on Commercial Street. The company will continue to operate the city's fuel dock at the Commercial Street location. The store will include six thousand three hundred and seventy square feet of retail space, seven thousand one hundred and twenty-three square feet of warehouse space, as well as miscellaneous office, storage, break room, and restroom spaces of approximately two thousand three hundred and twenty-one square feet. A new parking lot will be paved with forty-six standard vehicle spaces, two ADA accessible spaces, and bicycle parking. All runoff from the project footprint will be directed towards three bio-retention areas lining the parking lot that will attenuate and treat stormwater prior to discharging TBC's storm drain system. The project is located in the waterfront commercial district in the coastal zone. Sporting goods stores like the England Marine Store, that primarily sell equipment and gear for coastal development and related recreational activities, are principally permitted use in this district. The project requires designer view and a coastal development permit. The proposed building is fifteen thousand eight hundred and fourteen square feet in size and thirty-two feet in height. The primary walls will be cast-in-place concrete and will be a gray color with a contrasting taupe color base. The roof will be metal in a weathered copper color. The main entrance facing Waterfront Drive will have wood siding with wood trellises. The windows facing the Warfenger Building will also have wooden trellis features. Exterior lighting will be minimal and confined to the building. There are two proposed wall signs on the, with the company's name and logo that will be illuminated by overhanging shielded lights. One will be located above the main entrance facing Waterfront Drive, and one will be located on the northeast side of the building facing the Warfenger Building. No freestanding signs are proposed. The city's coastal development permit decision is appealable to the Coastal Commission. When asked about the project, commission staff members were centered around ensuring the new building is adequately elevated to minimize flooding risk. The parcel was once part of Humboldt Bay but was spilled and developed as a lumber deck sometime in the thirties or forties. The project footprint is currently over two hundred feet from Humboldt Bay shoreline and outside of the FEMA-mapped floodplain, but could be at risk of flooding in the future due to sea level rise. The applicant has proposed a finished floor elevation of fourteen feet. Based on current best available science, this elevation should ensure safety from flooding for the next fifty years under a medium-high-risk aversion sea level rise scenario, which predicts three and a half to four feet of sea level rise by twenty seventy. So fifty years of safety is adequate in this case because the city is only signing a nineteen-year lease with England Marine with the options for renewal up to a total potential term of forty-nine years. Conditions are recommended to ensure the project is consistent with the local coastal program's resource protection and hazard minimization policies. Overall, the project as conditioned is consistent with the local coastal program and will result in infill development on a parcel that has been vacant for at least four decades. Staff recommends that the planning commission hold a public hearing and adopt a planning commission resolution approving with conditions the designer view and coastal development permit. So here's a suggested motion, and myself and team, as well as the applicant's agents, are available for questions. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Chair Benson, you're muted.
Um, yes, thank you for providing that presentation and for sending in advance the more detailed plans out to the commissioners as part of the agenda. I just want to confirm with personal, Principal Planner Getz, that we, this is a time for commissioners to ask questions, and then we have public comment, then we go back to, to having discussions among the commissioners. Is that typical?
Yes, commissioner questions, then open the public hearing, allow anybody who wishes to provide testimony to do so, close the public hearing, and then commissioners are free to offer thoughts, opinions, and motions.
Okay, thank you so much for that clarification. So questions from commissioners at this time? For Planner Lisa Savage? I'll start with, I just have a few that I haven't gone through it. I'm curious, I've just, I was part of, of the public outreach, or I participated in the public outreach for the Brownfields Grant environmental assessment to turn up contaminants at, at Brownfields sites in the balloon tract, around the balloon tract. And so I'm just wondering if, if there have been any results yet from that Brownfields grant, and whether there are any concerns about contaminants either being on this site or drifting via groundwater to the site based on preliminary results from the environmental assessments at the balloon tract and elsewhere.
I'd like to defer that question to Kristin Kenyon or Kristin Getz.
But of my knowledge, the Brownfields study has not been completed on the balloon track at this point in time. And I unfortunately don't have any information about any significant environmental issues on this site.
Okay, and, and was a, was a phase one or phase two environmental investigation done on, on this site as part of the development permit or design?
I don't believe so.
Okay, but there's no particular reason to believe that was necessary, is what I'm hearing?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Can I follow up on that question? Because it's same. So can I confirm with the sign planner, Kristin, that this does not show up on the Knox Cortezi list of hazardous sites? Has that been reviewed?
Yeah, it doesn't show up on GeoTracker. The waterfront trail, there was an ESA done for it, and it goes adjacent to the site, and nothing was identified right here, although, you know, all of the waterfront trail, there's potential for undiscovered contamination just because of proximity to old railroad lines. So this was, this site, you know, looking at the aerial photographs, it was used as a log deck. But it was created through the, the geotechnical investigation thinks that it was, the fill is, is dredged spoils, so there's always a potential that, you know, contamination could exist, and it is down gradient from the balloon track. So, but, but nothing has been identified.
Are there measures in the construction period to occasionally test soils? You know, while they're, during excavations or any groundwork?
We did not include a condition requiring that in our recommendation.
Is that consistent with other, other developments in Brownfields to not have groundwater testing or soil testing? Is that sort of business as usual for us here in Eureka?
It depends on if there's, during the referral process, we hear concerns. Or there's some previous use of the site, like a TB birder, where there, there's more of a potential. I could see this level, like, I could see this type of project having a condition requiring that if any during ground disturbance, if, if anything was detected, that it be tested and and something done about it. I don't know if this is the type of project we would require testing before doing work.
Right. Not that every site is the same, and, and this really goes back in history to the building of the Warfenger Building. Were there any, was there anything found in inadvertent discovery or detection testing it during the construction of that building right across the street? Does anyone remember?
Not that I recall.
Okay. All right.
Get confirmation, Commissioner Benson, I, the, I looked at the Schuster oblique aerial photos prior to tonight's meeting, and it appears that this site's immediately adjacent to the Chicago Bridge and Iron site where there was dry dock facilities being constructed during World War Two. And that was the closest development that I could see on the Schuster photos, which was nineteen forty-six. So I guess it'd be interesting to get confirmation if, if that's our staff's understanding, or has been anything to suggest that? Because that, that's, that's the best I could locate. And I can share a photo, it would be helpful, that historical photo.
I don't have any knowledge of that.
Is there some, other than personal, other than just interest for the commission, is there anything particular in that photo that we ought to see? In your opinion, Commissioner Lazar?
I think it's worth taking a look at just to kind of see the type of development that flanked this property. And there's enough landmarks. I'll just share it real quick here. So this is, this is the dry dock facility here, the balloon track here, the marina, an earlier incarnation of it, and then this would be the area where I think the project's located. And I think the Warfenger Building is probably in this area. Maybe there's some additional fill, but I'd leave it to staff to correct if I'm mistaken.
You're right about the locations. I don't know about the dry dock or any of that information.
Right.
They're pretty busy. This is the SS Donbass, I believe, and this was you know, pretty, pretty industrial site for a good portion of that decade. But that's all I have. I just wanted to see if there was any, any information that, that could corroborate or better. I think your, your question was good, Commissioner Benson, because this isn't, the, the waterfront of Eureka has been post-industrial uses for over a century and, and is largely built on fill. So on one hand, the fill kind of creates a brand-new condition, you know, the, but on the other hand, the intensity of the uses that have occurred, you know, gives the possibility of there being contamination. And the, and the list for the, the GeoTracker is really only useful for sites that have posted development since they started kind of monitoring that. So this site's been vacant for quite some time, so we may not have any insight. You know, things like Halverson Park, you know, they've discovered, you know, contamination in those, in those areas, but that's a legacy of much longer timeframe ago.
Well, I greatly appreciate the commission practicing due diligence and asking these questions. And it seems that, that perhaps a condition requiring detection testing of, of some kind put into the language might be, might be prudent in here, and so, so staff be thinking of what that wording might be like if it, if we decide to ask for that as one of the conditions of approval. Other, other questions from any commissioners related to this project?
I just had kind of kind of a lowball question related to landscaping. I know there was a condition in the staff report about it, and I was wondering, Lisa, if you could run us through what the proposal is for landscaping and what, what the condition currently is, how it reads.
I'm going to refer that one to Kristin Kenyon, if you don't mind.
Lisa, there's a, a slide at the end of your presentation that has the landscaping plan.
I think, unfortunately, I think I deleted that one because I didn't think we were going to need it.
It's also in the attachments to the report. They're proposing all natives. And the condition just says not, they're not allowed to plant in bases or use certain redenticides, and that's like a standard condition that the Coastal Commission likes to see.
What I can, what I can add to that is that I was the, the botanist designing and putting together the plant palette for the waterfront trail, which is right across the street, and so I checked those, that native plant palette against the one proposed for this, and it was consistent. I didn't see any red flags, yeah.
And Kristin Kenyon, to clarify, Kristin's, would you be able to tell me what page in the packet has the site plan with the landscaping on it?
I believe it's the last thing.
Sixty, sixty and sixty-one?
Great, thank you. I don't have any other questions. That was a very thorough report, but thank you.
I have one more question for, for staff. When I was on the, on the Open Space Parks and Recreation Commission, a couple times, some realignment, proposed realignments for Marina Drive and Waterfront Drive came, came forward, and so I wonder if, if Planner Lisa Savage could pull us back. I think it was page two that, that showed us, just gave us a, a photo of the site, air photo of the site.
That one?
Uh, go back to two. I think it was page two. Yeah, there we go. Yeah, so I was curious whether there, there has been any more talk in, that I'm just not party to in the city about any alternative realignments to either waterfront drive or, or Marina Way at this time, or is that all in the past at this point?
As far as I know, that's done and all in the past, unless Kristin Getz has more knowledge.
No, at this time, there's no, there's nothing on the table.
Okay, good, good, thank you. I just wanted to revisit that, because I've seen some alternative street designs in here, and so if those are not, no longer on the table, then there's, there's, there's nothing that's being precluded in, in my mind from happening by, because of this development. Thank you.
And the project was referred to public works, so if they had had any comments regarding that, hopefully they would have included them.
Okay, great, thank you. I think I'd like to turn it over now to public comments. Are there members of the public who would like to comment on this particular project?
So we had no members of the public who requested to speak. And I'm not seeing anybody raising a hand.
Okay, could we then see the recommended motion on page twelve, I believe it was?
Why am I not going forward? There we go, sorry.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to open this up to any commissioners who might want to make the motion, and then we'll have some discussion before we vote on it.
I'd be happy to make the motion. It does sound like there's some interest in including a condition, you know, related to inadvertent discovery or any protocol for contamination at the site, if it does exist. But it seems like a great project. It's exciting to see that this site will be developed, and I'm really glad that, really glad that it's here. So do either of you want to add any additional conditions to this before I read it off?
I, if there's any language that staff has to recommend us about detection testing, just to add that as a, as a condition of approval? Is, is that satisfactory, just to say an additional condition of approval would be some kind of protocol for detection testing?
Are you interested in like pre-construction soil borings with sampling and Are you interested in, like, pre-construction soil borings with sampling analysis or just field screening during construction?
You know, I don't want to, don't want to, I, I was thinking field screening during construction, I don't want to add undue cost to the, the applicant, and if some of that's going to be done later under the, the brownfields grant, I certainly don't want to duplicate any efforts there, so I'm, in my opinion, I'm thinking just, just field testing.
Okay, yeah, so I would recommend a condition requiring the preparation seminal of a construction soil and groundwater management plan prior to commencement of construction that demonstrates that all, that provides for field screening during construction activities and sampling of any impacted soils and groundwater encountered with characterization for off-site disposal, something like that.
Can we just say what she said?
Yes, you can.
Thank you.
I would like to make a motion. Then I move the planning commission adopt a resolution to conditionally approve the England Marine Retail Store on APN oh oh three oh six two oh two seven in the waterfront commercial zone district with the additional condition as described by principal planner Kenyon regarding potential soil contamination on the site.
And do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and, and a second, further discussion by commissioners or, or comments.
I guess I'd just mention that I was a little bit fascinated slash anxious about the sea level rise discussion. And it's a little unsatisfying to, to use the, the least term as a way of sort of self-regulating the risks. But I do believe this is a good project, I think the things that are compelling to me are the nature of the project is low density, it's not going to be putting people in harm's way or expensive investments and, and infrastructure. And it, even though it doesn't quite hit the target as far as coastal dependent uses are concerned, there's a symbiotic quality to locating these such facilities in proximity to the water users. And, and so there's shared trip benefits, there's other things, I, I, I was also a little bit disappointed, but I don't know how to implement something like this, but the fact that we don't have a climate action plan adopted, we can't really require things like electric vehicle charging or other types of offsets for, you know, the, the type of potential impacts that come, so using a sequel exemption for a product of this sort without any kind of recognition of that is technically, I guess, acceptable, but kind of leaves something to be desired. So those, those are pretty much my thoughts, but it's a good project, I want to support it, but maybe the next time we see one of these, they'll be hard to tag on.
Thank you, Commissioner Lazar, I also looked with great interest at the sea level rise projections and having been the Humboldt Bay watershed coordinator for three years under Department of Conservation grant and part of the vertical working group looking at sea level rise, I, I saw the, the predictions as really, actually the medium, you know, not the conservative, kind of the, the middle ground sea level rise prediction, certainly not the, you know, the liberal estimate of, of if all the, all the ice in Greenland melts, we get six meters. It certainly wasn't that, but it seemed to be the moderate one, and it seemed to be updated per Alderon Laird's work. I was content with what I saw there, it didn't seem to be too lowball to me. But I, and I also just support this, you know, England Marine has been around for a long time, one of the good actors on our waterfront. And I'm, it's, I'm delighted to see them expanding, and I've been a, I will, I will admit that I have been a, well, it's not an admission, but I've, I've been a customer, and it is a coastal dependent use in, in my recommendation, and, and I'm happy to see this move forward, and I, I thank them for their fidelity to doing business here in Eureka. And we are a port city and we do need their services, so I'm happy to support this from, from the perspective of the planning commission. Any other comments from commissioners? Are we, are we ready to take a vote on it? All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Did I miss, Commissioner Lazar, do you have a no, a noes then?
Oh, no, I, I, I was aye.
Okay.
We're missing the roll call right here, but Jessica is unable to do so, so we're making it work.
I think I got it figured out in case you guys need it again.
Three yes votes in the motion carries.
It carries, okay, good.
Thank you.
You're, you're welcome. All right, let us, let me get back to the agenda, scroll just a moment, and we are into item E two B. The Corcoran Global Living Use Permit and Coastal Development Permit. I would like to hear a, a staff report on that from, from Jacob Nunes.
He is our newly hired planning technician, I don't think that you have met him before, but he's going to be providing your presentation tonight.
Fantastic.
Assistant Planner.
My apologies, yes, Assistant Planner.
There we go, alright. Can everyone see the presentation?
Yes, sir.
Alright, I'll start launching into this. Good evening, commission members, it is a pleasure to be presenting to you today, I am here to present Corcoran Global Living Proposed Round Four Realtor Office Use. The project is, the project is proposed on the edge of Old Town Historic District, three blocks south of Humboldt Bay and one block north of Fourth Street. The site is on the northwest corner of Third and G Streets. Specifically, the project is located at five twenty-seven Third Street, which is also known as twenty, two thirty-six G Street. The site is composed of two structures, the two-story Joseph Russ Building and a one-story metal building in the rear of the parcel. The eastern half of the lot is the site of the former Russ Market Building, destroyed by a fire in December two thousand and six and is currently undeveloped. The project is located within the Joseph Russ Building, which is on the local register for historic places, and it has two street-level tenant spaces, five twenty-seven and five thirty-one Third Street. The eastern ground floor tenant space, five thirty-one Third Street, is currently being used as an architecture office, which was conditionally permitted under conditional use permit, C dash fifteen dash zero 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 one. The upper floors are occupied by professional offices. Five twenty-seven Third Street is currently vacant. The proposed office will occupy the western ground floor tenant space, which is approximately one thousand five hundred and thirteen square feet in size and currently vacant. No exterior modifications to the Joseph Russ building are proposed. However, two unilluminated window signs are being installed, or will be installed, because, but because the signs will not exceed ten percent of the fifty-five square foot storefront window area, the signage is exempt from City Eureka's sign regulations. The site is located within the parking assessment district, which does not require parking for commercial uses. The project is located in the CW Waterfront Commercial Zone District with a core retail commercial land use designation, which pri, which prioritizes visitor-serving uses such as commercial retail, restaurants, bars, theaters, museums, and art galleries. Office and residential uses are also encouraged on the upper floors of mixed-use buildings to support ground floor visitor-serving retail businesses and ensure the presence of people in the area around the clock. In the waterfront commercial zone district, administrative businesses, administrative business and professional offices require conditional use permit. Additionally, the project is located in the coastal zone and requires a conditional development permit. A coastal development permit, my apologies. As discussed in the staff report, staff has attempted to recognize the unique nature of the proposed Realtor Office by developing dual findings to either support the use or find that the use is inconsistent with the goals of the city. Represented in the report, staff has found that the use is not coastal dependent, coastal-related, recreational, or visitor-serving, and does not offer retail sales and services to citizens or visitors established by the core retail commercial land use designation. Any benefit to nearby businesses from customers visiting the Realtor Office could be realized by locating other retail uses in the space. The proposed Realtor Office could be located above the ground floor and still provide same, the same benefits, while not reducing the limited supply of ground floor tenant spaces in Old Town. Because there will no longer be a permitting hurdle for ground floor Realtor uses, uh, real, ground floor Realtor offices due to conditional use permits running with the land, visitor-serving uses will no longer have a competitive advantage at this site, which will further limit the ability of new visitor-serving uses to establish in Old Town. Conversely, the proposed use will occupy a currently vacant and could provide similar benefits to, to, as to a Realtor use. As indicated by the applicant, the Realtor Office use will attract a steady return of clients to the area from across Humboldt Bay. The storefront will also be visually interesting by maintaining updated information on the local real estate market that both locals and visitors can utilize. A condition of approval, of approval is that the Realtor Office use is required to participate in at least fifty percent of the community events such as arts alive, Friday night markets, and other community celebrations focused on Old Town. In addition, the storefront in question has been vacant for some time. A viable use present in the space, even if that use isn't the highest and best use for the area, is better than having no use at all occupying that space. Lastly, the use will have no direct impact upon either coastal resources or public health and safety. In total, staff has provided findings that either support the issuance of a use permit and coastal development permit, or conversely, find that the ground floor office use is, is inconsistent with the purpose of the core retail commercial land use designation, the CW Zone District, and the local coastal program. Staff recommends the planning commission hold a public hearing and either adopt a planning commission resolution denying the conditional use permit and coastal development permit, or adopt a permit and coastal development permit, a, a, adopt a resolution, sorry, approving with conditions the conditional use permit and coastal development permit. Action on a coastal development permit is not appealable to the coastal commission. Please note that the planning staff, that planning staff has received comments from the coastal commission following the public notification of the project to add a condition for approval that the proposed Realtor Office permit term be limited to two to five years or similarly, or similar, similar appropriately limited authorization period. And that the inclusion, an inclusion of such a permit clarify that the existence of the use and CDP approval is for the proposed non-visiting use and shall not prevent the application for any required permits or principally permitted use for the same parcel. In the approval of the use, NCDP shall not convert any land use entitlement or property right to the holder of the permits beyond the permit expiration date set forth in the use permit in CDP. Here are the suggested motions, and Kristin and I are available for questions, and the applicant is with us in the audience.
Great, Chair Benson, you're muted.
Thank you, Assistant Planner Nunes, for, for the report, and especially providing sort of the good cop, bad cop routine, we usually have to work that out ourselves as commissioners, and so it's nice to see reasons why we would deny and reasons why we would, would approve, so appreciate that, that thoroughness. I will open it up to questions for, for other commissioners, it's time.
I'm curious if the applicant can tell us how long that space has been vacant?
I assume that's, question is to me, as the applicant? And I'm not, I'm not sure how long, maybe Cash who's here as well can comment on that, I know it's been on the market for four hundred and four days looking for a tenant, I don't know if it was vacant the whole time?
I think Lucy, hi, Commissioner, I'm Cash Bujja Architect, I'm right next door to the space. I think Lucy and Thomas, Humboldt Bay Coffee moved out almost year and a half ago. So, al- almost, yeah, about eighteen months or so?
Thank you.
And Commissioner Freitas, this morning I sent you a copy of a letter from the property owner who provided a little bit of information on their, their struggles, as they call it, for finding a qualified tenant.
Perfect, yeah, thank you, I must not have seen that, I'll check it now.
I greatly appreciate that the coastal commission put a time limit on this in case some kind of visitor-serving development is, is given an opportunity at a future time, but I'm curious for the applicant who's, would be investing in this, can that applicant re-up the coastal use permit or the CDP after that two to five-year period? Can it continue if no other developments are proposed that would be more consistent with visitor-serving development?
Yes, they would have to apply for an amendment if the commission was to put in a deadline for the use to be allowed there. And just to, to confirm for you, Steph, understands the coastal commission's concerns. However, if the commission is looking at putting in some timeline, we would certainly hope that you would consider a longer one, much longer than two to five years.
And whose decision trumps the time limit? Can the city offer anything that's not consistent with what the coastal commission has said?
Yes. The, the, the planning commission does not have to incorporate the coastal commission's suggested condition. They could choose not to put a timeline on it and just let the use permit run with the land. If the, if the planning commission chose to put a timeline on it, then either the, the tenant would have to apply to modify the use permit and coastal development permit prior to the expiration of the timeline, or they would need to vacate the premises.
Understood, thank you for that clarification. I, I was reading that professional offices could be this, could be secondary use on the ground floor and primary use on the second floor, and this project seems to propose the entire ground floor as, as office space, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, but certainly it reduces vacancy, I guess the, the big question is, does this tip the scales towards, in favor of office spaces relative to visitor-serving development in that part of Old Town? Are we creating a business district, or are we, or are we? I don't have, I don't have a sense of, of whether this is a tipping type of project, or whether it's, or whether we have more visitor-serving developments around it that, so it doesn't begin to dominate as a business district? Anyone have comments from staff on that, that balance?
I also had a similar question, Commissioner Benson, I, I wanted to be, to know whether there'd been a study of vacancy rates in recent years and what it revealed if there had been one?
There has been a study of vacancy rates for upper floor vacancies, I believe, and I'm sorry, I don't have that information in front of me this evening. But my vague recollection is that there was significant vacancy above the first floor for office-type uses.
Thank you. A follow-up question is maybe a different way to frame it, have, have there been, have past planning commissions been on a trend of, of allowing non-visitor-serving development in, in this part of town in, let's say, the last decade?
So this is the third application for an office on the first floor that we've processed in my recollection. Both times before, we provided the opportunity for the planning commission to choose to deny it in alignment with the local coastal program. We also provided Uh, we also provided, um, counter-conditions and a counter-possibility of approving it um, based on, um, conditions finding that it was not, uh, in conflict with the local coastal program.
Okay.
So, both times before, the Planning Commission has chosen to approve it.
I see.
Um, and the question that you're asking is the question that we're asking of the Planning Commission.
You're waiting for us to answer it, and we're waiting for you to answer it, I suppose, uh, about where the, the balance is. I, I guess I'm looking for some notion of, some information about a proportion. You know, is this a drop in the bucket? The, you know, the amount of office space versus, on first floors versus visitor-serving development? Or are they roughly equal, looking at Old Town as a district per se? I'm not asking for anything exact here. I'm just curious, even at a trend level.
Sure. I think at this point in time, the visitor-serving uses certainly, the, I'm sorry again, the amount of visitor-serving uses that we have certainly outweighs the number of quote-quote "non-visitor-serving uses" that we might have on the third, on the first floor. And it, it is a question of when do we reach that tipping point where we have allowed, um, too many non-visitor-serving uses, and it does change the character of our pedestrian-focused and pedestrian-oriented Old Town?
Go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I guess my, one of my questions was that, uh, that, well, I wanted to confirm, you said there was two other instances where we had seen a similar proposal, the planning commission had to decide whether to approve or use permit for non- visitor-serving uses on downstairs. Um, one of those was the other side of this building. Is that correct? The, the, where Cash's offices?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, and then, um, is there ever been any situations where there were code enforcement actions taken against downstairs uses that were not consistent with zoning that you're aware of? Where someone reoccupied a building with a use that was not allowed, and there was maybe a business license application or something where it got flagged? I'm just wondering if any of these have been operating under the radar theoretically?
So, um, as I mentioned, there were two previous ones that have been approved. They were both approved without timelines, so their continued operation is still valid and legal at this point in time. Trying to think of any other locations or imagine any other locations where there might be non-visitor-serving uses on the first floor, and none are really coming to mind at this point in time, so.
Um, okay, and so the other question I had is how this might relate in a kind of grandfather or non-conforming use context? Do we have instances in Old Town and the areas that we have dissonance between the current use and the zoning for the visitor-serving uses? Do we have an awareness or a, um, sort of population of legal non-conforming uses? And what would the timeline be for those extinguishing under the, in the coastal zone?
Sure. So, um, I would say that the majority of offices that are located, uh, above the first floor probably do not have permits. The exceptions to that would be the Healy Building, because we had permitted offices above the first floor in that building, and the one that the Planning Commission just did last month, um, at Second and East Streets, right next door to the Healy Building. Um, but the rest of them more than likely are grandfathered uses. They would remain as long as they were still in compliance with the non-conforming section of the implementation plan. And at this point in time, I'm not aware of any that are other than non-conforming, illegal.
And is there a timeframe before they, uh, under the non-conforming provisions, if any uses lapse?
No, they can continue.
Cause one of the arguments I saw in the letter from Mr. Maxon was that this had a history of being used for real estate use to this comeback. I believe it was maybe the Belcher and Abstract Company. And so that's a long, long-established use of the building, if I recall. But it, it, under that kind of context, it would have been afforded the protection if I'm, if I'm hearing correctly.
Except for, if a non-conforming use is changed to a conforming use, then the non-conforming use can no longer continue. So, it had been changed to a retail, I believe, shoe store at some point, um, in the recent past. So that would be a legal use of the, of the, um, the tenant space.
Okay, my only other question, and I think Cash could really handle this one, is what's the current condition of accessibility with respect to the, the entrances on Third Street? Um, and is there, is there accessible entrances for, um, for the physically disabled?
Well, if you walk by, you can see that. I'm sure you do walk by, but it's a lot more accessible than any upstairs office.
Right, but like as far as an automatic door, I didn't see anything to suggest that there was anything that would allow for someone in a wheelchair to be able to self, you know, get into the building without, without assistance?
Yes, again, there is no automatic door or any ADA access to this, to the historic structure. It was built in nineteen oh one as a recorder's office, real estate recorder's office. There's a safe in here for all their transactions. Uh, no, it's not accessible per ADA.
Okay, any other questions, direct questions for staff or applicants from the commissioners? Okay, I'd like to open it up to public comments on this item.
Again, Mr. Temper, Temperate Chair, we had no members of the public request to speak on this item, and I'm not seeing any hands unless Mickey Pardo's, Mickey Pardo's is raising her hand and would like to speak.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Jacob, for putting the report together, and, and, uh, thank you, Planning Commission. I, uh, I want to make sure you received my letter as well, that I sent early this morning. And, um, I also want to remind you, if I may, that we were Mickey Moves Real Estate until we merged with Corcoran. It's the same group of people. Um, we have been very actively involved in Old Town and Main Street. Uh, we have had art galleries. We've been open for Arts Alive when there was Arts Alive. And we want to continue playing in that area as well as being there for visitors as well as locals alike. And so that ground-floor access is really important to us. Um, also, the location of this particular building, uh, it has that historical charm of the area, which we really enjoy, and as well as it's on the edge of everything. It's not like right in the middle gazebo taking up that retail space. We were very cognizant when we looked for space to get something that was kind of just right, in size, shape, location. Um, and I do want to encourage you that, um, it's interesting that it's considered a non-visitor service, uh, because we do cater to out-of-area customers daily. Um, we're a resource for information, local market trends, goings-ons around town. We, um, like our clients to also participate with us in our volunteer projects around town. And I hope that you have noticed over the years how much we have participated. And we would like to feel both welcomed and be welcoming to our locals and visitors alike, uh, through this, uh, location. So hopefully you'll take that into consideration. I do hope too, it's either a much longer timeline. I can't imagine, um, investing money and time and energy and getting set up and just get going and all of a sudden we have to do this again. Um, and I think it's a, a, a use of resources that may not be necessary. So, um, so I just encourage you to consider a much longer, if not, um, unlimited timeframe as you consider this. And that's it. Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Yeah, thank you very much for, for the points that you had to make and for, and for being the applicant and investing, continuing to invest in Eureka, not only in your business, but in other events around Old Town. That's fantastic. Um, I, yeah, so it looks like Mr. Buje would also like to make some comments. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Craig. Uh, I, Kirsten mentioned there was two other, uh, like myself and another use that we have our permit, and there was no time limit on, on our approval. Is that correct? And so what I'm wondering about is the Coastal Commission staff, what kind of precedence is that setting? Number one, if there wasn't any, why now? And number two, if you can consider maybe, uh, having that tied into the lease agreement within Mr. Maxon and Corcoran, if you're concerned about long-term use of the over-hundred-year-old structure? You know, we, as you all well know, we're in a changing market when it comes to retail. And, um, the nature of Third Street where we are on the very fringe of the tourist pedestrian activity, it's a good one to keep in mind. Uh, very good question regarding the tipping point. Um, but, uh, also it has to do with context. What's happening with the parking lots across us? What's going, what, what, what impact they're going to have long-term with the city's, uh, uses? So I can potentially see a logic in having a time limit because of that factor. But I, uh, really like the commission to consider tying it to the extent, to the lease agreement within the particular applicant and the landlord versus two or five years.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Buje, and certainly it's within the commission's purview, um, what I'm hearing tonight, to, to consider, um, a, a longer lease than two, two to five years. But I, I, maybe I'll turn it over to Commissioner, uh, sorry, Principal Planner Getz to, to speak as to the, the Coastal Commission and their standards. I don't, I don't know why they decide what they decide in terms of time limits.
Unfortunately, we don't always know why they decide what they decide either. Um, so I know on the first, uh, application that we referred to them a number of years ago, um, they had grave concerns about locating, um, a non-visitor-serving business, who was a mortgage company, um, on the first floor of, uh, a building on, trying to think where it is, uh, just off of Second Street, I believe it is. The, I believe that the comments, um, that were received from the Coastal Commission for the second project application were probably similar. I don't recall them specifically. And then, um, while they're, I would not say that they were supportive of the project, uh, for this referral. Um, they did offer, by suggesting the two-to-five-year limitation, um, kind of an olive branch to us, I guess you could look at it as. I don't believe that there's any precedent, um, with them either not providing comments, not supporting a project, or, um, encouraging that a specific condition be considered. And I don't believe that it would be precedent-setting for the commission to choose to put a timeline on it, provided they can make some findings about why they're putting the timeline on it.
Great, thank, thank you. Okay, if there are no other speakers from the applicants or the public, um, I will bring it back to the, the commissioners at this time. And Assistant Planner Nunes, would you mind bringing back up the motions for us?
I guess I'd like to just start it off if I, if I can.
Please do.
In my, my perspective that I'm bringing to this discussion, um, is that I'm, I'm supportive of the proposal for this business to move in. I think it is unfortunate that we don't have, um, you know, more support for it in our current local coastal program, and I do hope in future that will be addressed if possible. Um, but I think in terms of the tipping point, you know, when will be the point where there is too much office and not enough visitor-serving retail? I don't think that we are there yet, and I think as one of the commenters noted, we are in sort of a changing time with retail, not to mention COVID on top of everything, and I think what Old Town really needs right now is activity. Um, and people coming in and out of storefronts, people feeling safe, walking around Old Town. And I think in terms of Old Town remaining visitor-serving, it needs to feel safe, and part of it feeling safe is having that activity. I also, you know, I'm very, um, supportive of the argument brought by one of the commenters about, uh, Corcoran slash Mickey Moves definitely being a community-serving business. I'm sure they will do a good job being part of the Old Town community and welcoming people into their business during, um, Arts Alive and, and other functions. Uh, in terms of having a time limit, I think I'm leaning towards not having it. I do agree with the development of other sites. Um, around the business, there would be potentially new, new clients, new markets for visitor-serving retail. But I would, if we do have a time limit, I would like to see one ten years, fifteen years down the line as opposed to two years. So those are my, my initial thoughts and where I'm leaning with this proposal.
Thank you, Commissioner Freitas. Commissioner Lazard, do you have comments that you'd like to share?
Uh, yeah, I think I'm more in the middle. Um, I, uh, I think that this is a good fit for this building as far as the current use that's proposed. Um, I think if, unless I'm mistaken, approving this use, and it says it in the staff report, would set this, if, if there was no time limit, or if there was a time limit, it would set the stage for any use that's similar in nature to reoccupy the building during that period. You know, so it doesn't have to be Mickey's real estate office. It could be someone else's real estate office, or an office of similar intensity and, you know, employee count, et cetera. Um, a use permit is an entitlement, and insofar as that's the case, it's not a, we're not obligated to approve a use permit, and we have to consider and balance, the findings have to be made. Um, I appreciate the even-handedness of the approach to, uh, this item in terms of providing us both options. In my mind, I'd like to see more being given by the applicant in exchange for the, um, you know, the ability to do a use that doesn't, that is not allowed under the zone. Um, and I was probing about the ADA because I do see that as a place where this building can be made to better serve the public regardless of the tenancy. And I say that not lightly, because it is a historical structure. It does have, it's probably one of the great, best examples of a well-maintained building with high level of integrity. Um, there's been very little change. And in fact, I'm going to share my screen just because I think this demonstrates that. Um, you know, this is from the nineteen oh two souvenir. And you can see, as I was mentioning, Belcher and Crane Company. In that regard, this was built with that tenancy in mind, that being an abstract or a title company essentially, which is not far from a real estate office. So in some ways, if you were a super hardcore preservationist, you could say that Corcoran's reoccupying portions of the downstairs is re-establishing part of the historical character of the building. You know, I'm not that crazy, but I will say that it's not a huge stretch, and the building is designed for that type of occupancy. Uh, what it wasn't designed for, as Mr. Buja noted, is, uh, the ability to accommodate folks from, you know, the physically disabled. And, and that's often one of the balances that you have to make when adapting old buildings to new uses. Um, usually, under the building codes, I understand it, it's triggered by investment, and the amount of investment is proportional to the amount of changes to the building that you make to facilitate accessibility. And I think, given the fairly modest changes that would be necessary, it would be unlikely to trigger any kind of, um, code, building code-related ADA stuff, but it is something that could be offered, and to the extent that we can use that as a way to justify the use kind of deviating from what is allowed in the zone. I'd, I'd like to investigate if any of the other commissioners are interested. I'd, I'd like to investigate if any of the other commissioners are interested in, in adding that as a condition. And of course, I mean, using accessibility improvements in the most context-sensitive way possible, use of the historical building code, not altering the, the characteristics that are such a, um, an important piece of the building. But, uh, yeah, I, I, and since we have Cash here, we have a professional architect, he could better speak to the feasibility of that, but that's, that's where I'm at. I'm certainly in support of this, and I'm not necessarily wedded to having a timeframe. And I believe that the coastal commission is coming from the standpoint of visitor-serving uses is part and parcel with the Coastal Act and trying to make areas that are proximate to the coastline uh, available for the types of uses that get people into those areas. And I don't see Eureka having a short supply of that in terms of what we already have in our existing inventory. Uh, so that's where I'm at right now, but I, I'd be interested in seeing what some of my colleagues are thoughts are on applying a condition regarding ADA, and also hearing from Mr. Buja.
Yeah, well, um, I would say Commissioner Lazar, a couple clarifying questions. It would be great if Cash could also potentially give an estimate of cost for that. I'm assuming there would be enough right of way because I know the Carson Block Building also has, um, you know, a ramp. But would you be suggesting that the applicant pay or the owner? I feel like typically procedurally, it would be the owner who would install that type of improvement.
How is it visioning the owner? Yeah, Mr. Benson.
Okay.
I guess I'll weigh in at this, at this time, I'm, I have a disposition to make a motion, uh, to approve for, you know, a couple of reasons, um, and, and to approve with a condition to allow more time. I'm very sensitive to the, to what it means for a business to put investments into the city and that they want to at least have a, a certain length of time where there's a return on that investment. And so I see something no less than ten years as a, as a good starting place. I agree with Commissioner Freitas on that, but I do like to see a limit in case there's some other kind of visitor-serving development, um, you know, might in, indeed come forward. I appreciate that the applicant is, is, is not offering any exterior modifications, so keeping the Joseph Russ Historic Building, um, you know, consistent, um, you know, I, I also appreciate that. And, um, but I, but I am cognizant that we're missing two voices from this planning commission tonight, and also I'm, I'm, I'm wondering if, I don't want to delay things, but I also would, would perhaps like to give the, the property owner and, and the current, um, uh, tenants, you know, a chance to maybe confer about, you know, what else might be possible in terms of ADA compliance and, and, and bring perhaps a, a modified proposal to the full commission when, when we have all five of us. And I'd also be curious to hear from, from those two other commissioners who are absent, um, tonight. And, um, you know, that's sort of where I sit with it at this moment.
Yeah, I definitely appreciate Commissioner Benson's interest in having, um, the other commissioners' voices at the table. But that being said, you know, there are going to be times when one or two of us are out and will need to move things forward. You know, I just imagine as an applicant, that being pretty emotionally taxing, to have to wait for a decision. I, I think we, I think we have what we need to make a decision tonight. I think we are showcasing kind of, you know, both sides. In addition, as you said, staff is also giving us both sides tonight, so maybe they can act as some of the commissioners that we're missing. So, yeah, I, I understand that sentiment, um, and I don't want to speak for them, but, um, you know, as, as members of businesses themselves, I, I feel like they would also be receptive to the argument being made by the applicant. But again, I can't, I can't speak for them or what conditions they maybe would have on this project. And I would still like to hear from Cash, uh, if he, if he is available and willing to, to address us.
Do you have permission? Yes, I, should I?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, I, the issue of, uh, we all know ADA is a federal law. Uh, Governor Brown signed the law, I think, year before last that he left in the, the office, that all leases between tenants and landlords have to admit that the, um, the structure meets all CALDAG and Title twenty-four and ADA standards. As you know, California accessibility is a little, is, is stricter than federal. So Jerry, Jerry Brown signed that into law. The accessibility is an issue between the tenant, the landlord, and the building department. And, uh, it's very clear, uh, what the steps are, and it starts with the front door. Uh, after a certain expenditure of funds, uh, that are made, uh, in the occupancy, you know, up to, I think it's ninety thousand dollars right now. If you go above, uh, that, then the entire building has to be updated to ADA bathrooms, access, hardware, location of receptacles and all that. When you, when you're under a certain threshold, it starts with the front door. So I think, um, once we have a project and the applicant, uh, is doing the improvements and is submitting plans to the building department, if it's, uh, hitting, uh, if it's not hitting that threshold, then they have to make the front door accessible per, uh, Title twenty-four standards. That's basically how it works. I don't know. I haven't been part of any planning commission hearings before where the planning commission required that the, a structure be handicap accessible, existing historic structure. And of course, it has to be done within sensi- with sensitivities to a registered historic round landmark right here, uh, which would really, I think more than anything else, I think it's going to end up being a push button, not necessarily a ramp. Uh, the access, the step here is, uh, can be dealt with. Uh, so most likely, that's what's going to happen when, when the time comes to do the building improvements.
And Cash, do you have a general sense of how much a push-button system would cost?
Everything's gone up below, I think, uh, five to six thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you.
And, uh, Cash, I think confirmed my understanding as far as how the mechanics of these things work. But I think the way I would present what I was suggesting is that, and, uh, I'm certainly welcoming staff or Cash to correct me, but the way I look at accessibility is when you have existing structures that, or even, even more contemporary buildings that just don't meet current contemporary accessibility requirements, they're never given a pass, they're just given time. And there's things where thresholds are exceeded and the, and then you are obligated to make additional investments to bring it up to the next tier of compliance. And we also have those, those horror stories where there's someone who files a lawsuit, um, because the building doesn't comply, and they're willing to be the, the party to a lawsuit. And so it, it's a sort of tenuous or, you know, negotiation between the building official for the jurisdiction in which the building's located and the periodic progress that gets made where new, new targets are set for ADA compliance. What I'm saying is in the context of a conditional use permit, a discretionary action by our body as a mitigation, as a, as a improvement to offset some of the impact of the use of, you know, that's being forfeit, the visitor-serving use and service, that we have this maybe accelerated investment in accessibility ahead of maybe the schedule that might otherwise occur related to the improvements of what triggers the next step in terms of improving accessibility and compliance with the ADA.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, um, I, I see, uh, Mickey Cardoza raising a hand. Did you wish to speak?
Yes, please and thank you. Um, I, I just want to say accessibility is important to me as well, and that was one of the appeals, that this is also on the ground level, different than our current building, which only has stairs. Um, and just as a little matter of, of history on that, we have always had a ramp and helped people in, wanting to serve all parties, so we're really aware of that. This particular, uh, threshold, the way it is, there's just one little section that would be a bump, um, and then the door is super wide. So we've already talked about this as well as with our staff, about making sure that anybody can be able to enter, even if it means we open the door and help someone. I realize that that is not ADA compliant. I just want to let you know that we have also thought through this as far as the location goes. Um, and I also want to add, we, um, I, I don't know if it was seen in the letter, but that we want to participate with Arts Alive and have, uh, visiting, uh, artists display their work as well. So just those two points, I want to make sure you hear, and I appreciate all the discussion about it. Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could just add for the commission's information, because this property is listed on the local register of historic places, if there does have to be any changes to the exterior facade of that building, they will have to go to the Historic Preservation Commission for review prior to that happening, and that could even mean installation of a push-button for a door has to go to them, depending on how they propose to do it. So just so you know that.
Yeah, I, I do know that it complicates matters greatly in, in that sense. Okay, um, I know we want to move forward with that. I'm hearing that from all the, all the commissioners, and we have two motions, um, options made available to us by staff. I've also heard that an extension of the time period, um, I've heard ten to fifteen years, I've, I've, I've heard ten years. I'm, in my own mind, I'm thinking, you know, can we do ten years? And, but ask that maybe five years out, there is some kind of a more, um, formalized uh, plan, uh, about ADA compliance, so that can be revisited maybe in less than ten years. Uh, but, you know, again, I, I want to be business-friendly in, in this in terms of not, not putting egregious, um, conditions, you know, on, on the permit, um, but I'd, but I'd like to see ADA, as Commissioner Lazar has said, you know, keep that on, on the fast burn rather than the slow burn. And if there's any way for us to encourage that in the way we make the motion tonight, I'd, I'd like to hear any language that seems reasonable about that. Maybe other commissioners could help me with that.
And if I could just clarify one more thing, please?
Yes, please.
There is no recommendation from staff for a timeline. The recommendation from staff is if you choose to implement the coastal commission's suggestion of putting a time limit on it, then staff would recommend that that time limit be much longer than either two or five years. So.
Good, um, you know, my last sort of just personal comment is that, is that, you know, I've, I go, spend a lot of time in, in downtown areas, um, as I've become more interested in that, um, as a planning commissioner, and, and I love it when I go to other towns and I see real estate offices around town. It, it really does feel like a visitor-serving, um, experience, as Mickey Cardoza said. When I get to see, well, what, what is, what's available around here? What's the cost of things? It, it enhances my experience of a particular region, and, uh, and, and I do appreciate that. And it's usually presented nicely and very interactive. And, um, and so I, I don't see it as a non visitor-serving development, maybe in the coastal commission's, you know, strict um, description and definition of that, but, but not in the user experience side of it, where, where it does feel visitor-serving to me. So I would like to make a motion to approve. And, uh, I'm going to, I move the planning commission to adopt a resolution approving with conditions, uh, the requested permit and coastal development permit to allow an office on the ground floor at five two seven Third Street. And I would like this commission to, to offer a, an extended time period of, of that business from, for ten to fifteen years, uh, before they have to look at, um, re-upping their, the, the CUP or the CDP.
I would support a fifteen-year, a fifteen-year term to be built into the lease.
Okay, I am willing to amend that motion to not be ten to fifteen years, but make it a fifteen-year period.
I would support it being not term limited. If we can get a commitment to improve the entrance to make it ADA accessible. And I'm even willing to entertain a timeframe for that improvement, like five years, say, or something like that, within five years of occupancy. But I'd like to see more than just, uh, the approval of the use that. The thing I, I think I like about that is it gets Mickey in the building, and it puts the onus on the landlord, um, to, to complete the improvements. And, uh, and it could be even a five-year permit term if they don't want to complete the improvements, you know, or, or a revisitation of the permit, an amendment, or something like that, if that makes sense.
Commissioner Lazar, essentially, it sounds like in a way you sort of have a bifurcated path, where either they put in the improvements in the first five years, you know, without, without a term limit. Or they could potentially accept a term limit and not make the improvements. Is that correct? Or do you want?
That's a good way. Yeah, I think that's a fair way to kind of give them both options and move this along.
I would be supportive of giving them both options if that, um, is a, if that makes sense to do. But I guess that would put it in their court, and potentially the tenant and landlord could, could negotiate, you know, cost sharing of the improvement if they chose, um, if they prefer to stay, stay in that location longer. Um, so that may be, that may be a way to address both elements of this. Um, and I would be supportive of it if our temporary chair is also supportive.
Yeah, so, so applicants and, and staff, you know, hold on because we're certainly in negotiation as, as commissioners um, to reconcile our, our interests that are all, all valid. I'm, I'm going to try to find a middle ground here, which I mentioned earlier. What if, and this is just for comment, I'm not amending the motion yet, um, we, we made a, a time period of, of fifteen years, but included at, at, at year five, some mo- some, at least a plan for ADA compliance that would be completed by year ten. So it would give the owner and the applicants a generous amount of time to, to go through that, that process, which we do know goes past the, the historic, um, uh, commission, and, and there's some, you know, there's a little bit more, um, effort and, and time and investment into that. And I'd just like to offer that, um, in this, um, in this condition to give them a generous amount of time to do that rather than, um, than, than put it, thou shalt have it done in five years. Um, but thou shall have a plan to have it done by ten years is what I'm proposing here as a hybrid of what I'm hearing from both my other commissioners, so I respect greatly, um, their points of view.
And Commissioner Benson, would you be interested in retaining, you know, the options for the applicant to either make the improvements on sort of a staggered timeline? And then retain a permanent lease? Or are you pretty tied to the time limit as being an element of this?
I'm pretty tied to the time limit because I, because I, I can't look in the crystal ball and know what the future is there. I want to give the applicant enough time that it's worthwhile to invest, but, but keep the options open for something that's more visitor-serving as a development in some, in some future time. And, uh, so, so I'm still a little bit, um, tied to that, I should say. I don't want to make it in perpetuity, I guess, certainly. And I'm hearing you about the time limit of, of out to, out to fifteen years. That seems, that seems generous. Something that someone could hang their hat on as a business, with, especially with the chance to re-up it thereafter if the next generation wants to keep the business going.
I guess I just feel like, uh, it would be a lot to try to expect that we're going to be monitoring this and bringing it back to the planning commission or to the Historic Preservation Commission to ensure that they complete the task. And so I, I, I'm more partial to just giving them the I, I, I'm more partial to just giving them the fifteen year term, but unlocking the term to, you know. No term limit if they complete the accessibility improvements in five years. That, that way they know their options. And if they, they do complete it, they can invoke that condition and, and, and make the permit not term limited. Because to me, it's accelerating the improvements. That's the, the, the thing that I want to see. And the longer it gets pushed out, the less. Meaningful it is, because it's going to be required. The building doesn't comply with the ADA. And until it does, it needs to be brought up to compliance and it's just a matter of time. It's just, will it be under a lawsuit? Or will it be under the next suite of improvements or whatever, but. Yeah, to me, it's more beneficial in the short term.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I believe that the ADA compliance will be brought up to standards with the building permit. That they're going to have to get to change the occupancy from the retail use to the office use. So the building code would require ADA improvements. Based again on the cost that you've talked about and, and that kind of thing going forward. So I'm not sure that there would be. The need for a plan for ADA compliance in five years, because it would be happening. Now for them to get their building permit certificate of occupancy.
Well, thank you so much for that information. It sounds like there's a process already in place that we were not quite, um, up to speed on. Um, where that, that's already going to be happening. Um, so rather than this bifurcated path of having a carrot and a larger carrot. You know, basically if you do the ADA, you get, you get a, a, a lease in perpetuity, um, or at least that option. You know, versus a shorter one, if you don't do that work. Um, it sounds like that is. The ADA plan is going to happen through the building department rather than through our recommendation. Does it strengthen? The, our proposal for the building department to see that we've recommended that, or does it not really make any difference at all? Uh, this is a question to Principal Planner Getz.
I do not believe it would make a difference to the building department. The code is going to require what the code is going to require.
I see. So we're back to the original motion that I made to, to give a, a, a period of, of fifteen years. And then revisit, um, visitor serving development and see what happens at that time.
I'm, I'm willing to support that motion, but Principal Planner Gets, are you one hundred percent certain that ADA would be? Triggered purely based on changing occupancy type, because I'm not sure they'd be putting fifty thousand dollars worth of work into this structure.
If there were no ADA requirements triggered now, it's because they would be in compliance with what the law currently requires.
Okay, um, since this is a robust conversation, we'll bring Cash Wuje back in. Yes, sir, go ahead.
If, if the planning commission likes to make a motion on ADA accessibility, it would be important to keep in mind that. The interior doors are historic, they're not thirty six inches wide, they have historic hardware, they don't have a kickboard down below. So there's all kinds of issues inside the building that are actually not meeting ADA also. So. Uh, as Kirsten mentioned, the building department with the permitting will be enforcing ADA accessibility. Per, per that, for what I mentioned before, based on the threshold of how much money is being spent on the project. However, because the footprint is less than fifteen hundred square feet. The building code does not look at it as a change in use. Because it's still a B occupancy, even though it was a retail and it's becoming office, it's still under, and under the code. It's still the same use. There isn't, the old use wasn't an M occupancy becoming an office structure. Because of the size of the footprint being so small. So, uh, but, but ADA is regardless. It, 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 it triggers with a new lease. Per governors, uh, per the state, the new state law. That they have to have a letter from a cast official saying that. There are these deficiencies with this structure. Do you both sign that you understand and you're liable if you don't meet the ADA? If that makes sense. So it's, it's, it's an agreement within the tenant and the landlord. I'd be happy to answer any other questions that you might have regarding ADA, but this particular change in use does not. From the building department perspective, would not trigger. Uh, uh, the ADA because it's under fifteen hundred square feet.
Commissioner Benson, the reason I, I was talking about is because I suspected that there would not be a need to augment the building. As part of this lease and this change. And I think what you're hearing from Mr. Wuje is. From a building code standpoint, it's a lateral in terms of occupancy, that fit within the same occupancy. So it's not, while it may be. A hair that we split at a zoning level, it's not one from the building.
So moving, moving forward then, um. It seems like we're back, we're back at the sort of bifurcated, um, option of, of, of offering. A, a, you know, a, one scenario where they, they get limited, um, uh, you know, tenancy or, or. Or the, the permit extends just to a certain period unless they, they, they do ADA. Um, within five years, um, regardless whether the building department requires it. Or, uh, or we have this limited, um, occupancy, um, with no ADA requirement at all. Am I getting it right? We've talked about a lot of scenarios. I want to make sure my head isn't swimming and I'm.
I think that's correct, yes.
Sorry, say again, um, Commissioner Fredis?
Yes, I think you captured that correctly.
Okay. So we are offering, now I'm willing to, um. Change my motion or alter my motion to, to offer, um, as discussed, a. A fifteen year. Occupancy. Without ADA or. A development of ADA compliance within five years for a, um. In exchange for not having a, a time limit on the occupancy.
If I could offer, Commissioner Benson, instead of using the word occupancy, which has kind of a specific meaning under the building code, maybe just talking about the permit term. So I use permit that's good for fifteen years to cover the requested use. Um, and then, uh, that the permit term could be changed, could be made to be. Uh, indefinite or, you know, unlimited if. Improvements to the entrance for through five twenty seven third street. Be, are made to meet accessibility. And if you want to tack on a lot of other stuff, it could be consistent with the historical building code. And the Secretary of Interior Standards for the Treatment of Historical Properties and that do not result in, you know. Damage to the historical resource. I mean, those would be the kinds of refinements I would be looking at.
Those are things that I support and clearly I shouldn't have been the person making the, the motion, because I don't have all that language in my, in my head. So I'm. Asking, uh, Principal Planner Gets to, or whoever's taking notes on, on this to amend my motion. With those specific details and the, and the choice of language that's more accurate.
I have, I have the motion to approve as shown on the slide. With the addition of the wording with a fifteen year expiration date. Or in perpetuity with a plan for ADA compliance by year five with work to be completed by year ten.
I like that and support it, and it's simple and understandable to me.
I think I would also one hundred percent be in supportive of that. I like where, um. Where we were going with potentially maybe, you know, completing that sentence, period, full stop. The planning commission also recommends. Um, adherence to the Secretary of Interior Standards. Um, and retention of existing historic hardware, uh, to the extent feasible, something, you know, to those lines. Uh, because they are beautiful doors. I don't know if they will be salvageable with ADA improvements, but I hope that they will be. Um, and I think it would be worth putting in, you know, a clear interest in retaining what, what can be retained.
I think we have to remind ourselves that this is going before the Historical Preservation Commission, no matter what we do tonight.
Right.
So if we have confidence that they'll make sure that something that is an inappropriate modification isn't. Approved, then we don't have to get too special about it. But we could just reference, the Secretary of Interior Standards is appropriate. It's a contributing structure to the Old Town Historical District. It requires that type of approach. And the historical building code should be invoked to the extent that you don't make strict ADA compliance. Create this awkward fit, because there is the room to be more flexible under the historical building code.
Right. Yeah, I totally agree that I'm sure the, um. Historic Preservation Commission will have all of these things at front of mind. Um, but I, I would be interested to see it. Included as a one sentence recommendation regardless. Um, I don't think it would hurt. I agree, having the historic building code mentioned would be helpful.
Principal Planner Gets, could you tell us what that sounds like, since you're, you've been so good at capturing what you say?
Yes, I guess.
What does that additional sentence sound like, please?
It is the suggested motion to approve that's shown on your slide. And with the addition of the wording with a fifteen year expiration date. Or in perpetuity with a plan for ADA compliance by year five. With work to be completed by year ten, in compliance with the Secretary of the Interior Standards. As determined by the Historic Preservation Commission.
Yeah, that's, that'll do it. Thank you, Kristen.
Okay, I, we have rolled up our sleeves. We have made this thing happen and I would like to propose that we take a vote on it at this time.
I will, yeah, I will second that, um, proposed motion and I am also ready for a vote.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous and the motion carries.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you to the applicants.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I want to make a special shout out to, to Assistant Planner Nunes for, for his thoroughness. And as a former instructor of his at HSU, um, I have a little, uh, a, a little pride in, in watching him do such professional work. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, it was very nice to meet you.
Likewise.
Okay, we are moving forward then. Good job, everybody. Uh, we are in item F. Um, old business seeing none. Uh, we move into F two, new business, and this is the Charlie Moon Way. Public access places naming. And do we have a staff report on that tonight as well?
We do in just a moment.
Okay.
Is that showing for everybody?
Yes, we're seeing it.
Yep.
Thank you. So before you this evening is an application for a public places naming for Charlie Moon Way. The City's Community Services Department received a proposal from the Eureka Chinatown Project to have an alley. Located in Eureka's former Chinatown named Charlie Moon Way. The alley proposed for naming is located on the north side of Eureka. And if we zoom in a little closer, we can begin to see the location is in the Eureka downtown area. And the alley is located in the block bounded by fourth and fifth streets and E and F streets. Along the north side of the alley is a credit union and a dance studio and retail restaurant uses are. Located along the south side of the alley. Your staff report provides some of the history of the Chinese people in Eureka. And how Charlie Moon became known as the last Chinese person in Humboldt. Eureka Municipal Code, Section one five two point one five, prescribes the process for naming. And renaming of streets and other public facilities. The Open Space Parks and Recreation Commission recommended the. Charlie, the name Charlie Moon Way at their meeting on August twenty sixth. And now it's been referred to you for recommendation to city council as whether to name this, the street or the alley in this case as proposed. Or to recommend a different name. Following the planning commission's action, a report will be sent to the city council at a future meeting. And the council may approve the commission's recommendation, remand the matter to the planning commission for further consideration, or make its own decision on the matter. The alley proposed as Charlie Moon Way is not a continuation of or approximately the continuation of any existing street or alley. There are no other streets or alleys in the public or public facilities in Eureka that are named Charlie Moon Way. So there should be no confusion with other locations. And naming the alley Charlie Moon Way, along with the wayfinding signage that will be installed. References the history of the Chinese in Eureka and in Humboldt County and recognizes and identifies the site of Eureka's Chinatown. Staff recommends you accept public comment and then adopt a resolution recommending the city council approve. And here's a suggested motion when you're ready. And staff from the City's Community Services Department. And I are available for questions and the applicant, uh, the Eureka Chinatown Project is also with us in the meeting.
Okay, um, as for our, what we've done tonight, I'd like to open it up to commissioners to ask any questions at, at this point. Before we go into public comment.
I guess I had a question. Is there any other alleys targeted for renaming? And Chinatown has a specific defined area. And, um, I'm wondering if there were any, any other targets that are on the horizon.
Not that I'm aware of at this time. Um, as mentioned in your staff report, there is a history of naming alleys in Eureka. Um, we have three other named alleys that I'm aware of. But at this point in time, I'm not aware that we're looking to name any further alleys after Charlie Moon Way.
My question would be, other than just simply naming, because I know along North Coast Dance there, there's a, there's already an existing mural. Is there any other way of acknowledging, um, uh, Chinese culture? Um, in, in, at, in this location? Is there anything other than just a name proposed?
So there is wayfinding signage that's going to be proposed, um, in, I believe, two different locations on the block.
Is there some kind of a, of a logo that identifies Eureka's Chinatown? That, that would, would help people understand why they're looking at what they're looking and the significance of it? Um, yes, I see, I think maybe this is a good time to open it up to, to Marilyn, uh, nicely.
Marilyn would be the applicant.
Okay.
Hello, thank you for having us here today. Um, there is a mural that was, um, painted by. Designed and painted by David Kim and it is, the mural is in that alley.
Okay.
So there's acknowledgement there of the Eureka Chinatown, the history, and we're going to probably put a plaque up to, um. To kind of explain the mural and the design, but it's right there in that alley.
Thank you, thank you so much. I'm very pleased to hear that it's not just a name and wayfinding, but there are also culturally significant. Um, you know, signage that helps in, interpret for people to understand why it's meaningful. Yeah. Great. Are there any other questions from commissioners? Okay, like to open it up then to, to public comments more officially? Were there any other, I see Yolanda's phone has the hand up, so I'd like to invite Yolanda to speak.
Hello?
Yes, I can hear you, Yolanda.
Hi, uh, first I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge that. This virtual meeting is taking place on the traditional territory of the Weap People, home to many Weap People and descendants. I send them much love and respect. I'd like to give thanks to the Humboldt Asian and Pacific Islanders in solidarity. They continue to. Build and empower our community by fostering a more engaged and inclusive community. Thank you. Um, my name's Yolanda Latham and I'm, uh, the great, great, great granddaughter of Charlie Moon Senior, one of his many grandchildren. So it's an honor to be here today. I'm also a volunteer for Moon Creek Corporation. I just wanted to make a comment that I believe that Charlie Moon Way is a small step to a more inclusive future and small step to heal the past. We're thankful for this opportunity by naming the alley bounded by fourth and fifth and E and F streets. This helps to recognize the past and our great grandfather Charlie Moon. And I just wanted to say thank you.
You, you're so welcome and thank you for, for. For highlighting in our, in our minds how important reparations are and how movements like this and actions like this. Begin those small steps of, of healing for, um, you know, for, for. for, um, you know, for for what has happened um to the Asian community, particularly the Chinese community in in history. And how interestingly blended um Charlie Charlie Moon Way is in 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 combining um the Hupan Nation with 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 um Chinese Americans. And and that history goes on. And so such a pleasure and an honor to meet a great granddaughter of Charlie Moon. Thank you for being here tonight. Do we have a motion uh from staff that or that we could view again?
Don't forget to close public comment, please.
Thank you. Thank you. Keeping me on track here. Um, this closes public comment and we are back to the commission to have discussions. I would I would um invite any other planning commissioner to take the lead at at this moment, if you so desire.
I'm happy to make the motion. I I guess I I would, I was, I'd like to add that if we do consider in the future um naming additional alleys, uh, that Donald Chen would be a good potential candidate. Um, as 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 someone of Asian descent who moved to Eureka and also dealt with a lot of racism and abuse and was a a very small minority for a significant period of time following the second expulsion in nineteen oh six that occurred. That was the next milestone that I'm aware of. Um, but I I wouldn't, I would, I have no problem with the these Charlie Moon. If we're only going at one, I think this is a good, a good target. And uh, and so I'll move to the commission adopt a resolution recommending the city council name the alley between Fourth and Fifth Streets and E and F Streets as Charlie Moon Way. With the, and if if my commissioners would permit with the recommendation that uh future renaming, should it occur, uh, consider Donald Chen as a potential candidate.
I'd be happy to second that.
Okay, we have a motion and and a and a second. Any further discussion?
I'm just really happy to see this come through. Um, and I know that um is it Hoppy or or Hapi, HAPI, Humboldt has done some um walking tours of the alley as well and they have an Instagram page. Um, and I would recommend people follow them if they want to keep up to date on what they're doing. So thank you for the work that you're up to, you guys, and thanks to staff for bringing it forward.
Um, I I guess I have one other idea that maybe the Eureka Chinatown Committee might might consider. And this isn't part of the motion, it's just my own personal thoughts, is just looking at Asian Pacific Heritage Month coming up in May twenty twenty, you know, I'm wondering if there could be any event um as part of Asian Heritage Month that that does some kind of a a ribbon cutting or or something to really highlight the motion that um is being made tonight. Just a, just a thought, it's not a, it's not part of the motion. Okay. Well, look at this.
It put up the copies of the wayfinding information that I had um that were provided by Community Services. And um Commissioner Azar Ben Chin will be featured on the wayfinding.
That's great. This looks really great.
It really does. And it's it's a, you know, I was in the council chambers when the city of Eureka, um, you know, gave back forty-seven acres of Tula Wai to to the Weahts. And then and then, of course, when they gave the the balance of the island minus twelve um acres. And um I I'm proud to be in the city that that not ju- that doesn't just talk about this, but makes action um towards it and uh proud to be part of that uh tonight, or honored, I should say. Um, so I'd like to put this to, oh, sorry, um, we're done with public comment at the moment, so we need to take a vote. Um, but I would be happy to hear um from Marilyn after that. So I would, uh, all in favor of this motion, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
I see it's unanimous um again tonight. So as as a closing, normally we don't go back into public, but I'm going to ask Principal Planner Gets to not slap my hand too hard if I allow Marilyn pick nicely to speak again.
Your meeting.
Okay.
Well, thank you and thank you for your unanimous vote. I did want to mention that on the mural, we have a picture of Ben Chin. So he is honored there on the mural. And also, we're looking um probably for the Lunar New Year, which happens around in February sometime. Um, if if the Charlie Moon Way passes city council, um, that will probably be a time that we do a dedication and an acknowledgement during the Lunar New Year festivities. So just to let you know, it's a little earlier than May, but um the sooner the better. Thank you.
The chat has from Brian Mirja D'Souza has also said, thank you, Stephen. Great suggestion. Ben Chin is also included in the alley mural and thank you, planning commission. Okay, so back then to our agenda for tonight, trying to keep things rolling. Um, gee, reports and communications, uh, director reports and communications?
I have nothing for you this evening.
Okay, and same with other reports. Okay, I'm not seeing anything else on the agenda other than adjournments. Um, do we need?
I have one very brief communication.
Please do.
I would just like to thank Commissioner Benson for doing such a good job chairing the meeting. So thank you for stepping up. Um, excellent, excellent job.
Thank you, and thanks for the help um from Principal Planner Gets and and others. Okay, all right. So do we make a motion to adjourn? We just adjourned. Okay, well, I call this meeting adjourned. Everyone have a good night and thank you, planning commission and staff for your hard work.
Thank you, everybody.